Okay, you're good to go.
Good evening, welcome to Beverly School Committee Subcommittee Meeting of Curriculum Instruction in Student Life. Today is Wednesday, January 6th, 2021. We are meeting in a remote model today, or hybrid model today, excuse me, using a remote meeting application provided at no cost to our district. BEV CAM is kind enough to be broadcasting us tonight, allowing for public access to open portions of the meeting. This is allowed under the Governor's March 12th, 2020 order entitled Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass General Law 30A, Section 20. This order specifically suspends the need for a quorum and the chair to be physically present and ask her body to use technical methods to allow safe public access. We would encourage viewers to utilize BEV CAM streaming options this evening if possible. We're also trying a captioning tool while longer term better solution is created citywide. Um, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Um, please remember, uh, for our members that audio video your supply on this platform, or any audio video you supply on this platform will become part of the meeting record. As such, use your mute functionality to prevent background noise. The chair will call it to unmute when recognized. So I'm now going to recognize the School Committee Chair, Rachel Abel.
Yes, thank you. Um, this evening, before we begin, the School Committee would like to invite a moment of silence for contemplation and reflection for our nation and its leaders tonight as our Capitol returns to peaceful law and order after today's disruptions. So if you would. I thank you for taking that moment. I think more than ever, it's important that we recite our Pledge of Allegiance, so please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next, I thank you, Mr. Malady, for allowing me to add an agenda item to this Curriculum Instruction and Student Life meeting. I'm actually just admitting Dr. McKenzie now. It is my great pleasure to welcome and introduce Dr. Ken Anne McKenzie this evening. She was appointed to fill the balance of the Ward Two School Committee Representative Seat by the Joint Counsel of the City Council and the School Committee on December 17th. As she shared with us that evening, she is coming to the committee with a wealth of experiences from her professional life, but also as a parent to children in our district. She has prior experience working with the Brookline School Committee during the pandemic planning process and is currently the Director of the Aspire Institute at Boston University, whose primary goal is to support the pre-K to 12 educational sector with professional development based in social justice frameworks and community engagement. So as Chair of the School Committee of the whole, it is my honor to appoint her to this Standing Committee of Curriculum Instruction in Student Life, or SISIL, tonight, and to welcome her to the Beverly Public School School Committee. We thank her for joining us tonight and for the rest of the working year together.
Thank you.
There you are, okay. Thank you, Mr. Malady, again, for allowing that introduction and appointment.
You're welcome, and thank you very much, and welcome, Dr. McKenzie. Our next order of business on our agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes from our last meeting on December 2nd, 2020, pardon me.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you very much, I have a motion of second from Dr. Flaherty, any discussion on the motion? Okay, no discussion, we're gonna have to do a roll call vote, so I was hoping, Ms. Abel, if you can help me with roll call?
Sure. Um, I'll just start in the order I see us here, John Malady?
Yes.
Rachel Abel, yes. Uh, Ken Anne McKenzie?
Yeah.
Uh, Dorothy Flaherty? Greg Twombly?
Yes.
Ava Mack?
Yeah.
And Cameron Redmond?
Yes.
Joanne Hildreth?
Yes.
Lauren Gensudak?
Yes.
Oh my goodness, you're all moving around as you talk. Oh, I think, oh, Virginia Betts, did I get you already?
Uh, no, but yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that covers us. Yes, I think that covers us for this committee.
Great, thank you very much. Motion passes. And next, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Dr. Flaherty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we can see our agenda this evening, our spotlight school is...
Good evening, thank you. For our agenda this evening, our spotlight school will be Cove Elementary. Uh, once, um, we have heard about all the wonderful things happening at Cove, our student members will have an opportunity to, um, update us on things that are happening within their school, and we always welcome them to, um, ask any questions as we're going through any of our topics. And then our focus topic for this evening, uh, which is, I think apropos after everything that we've seen today, is about social emotional learning and mental health. And, um, we will be hearing from all of our principals to hear about what's happening in each of our individual schools. Um, so at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce, um, Ms. Erin Sweeney, who is the Principal of Cove. And now take just a minute while I stop sharing my screen, and she can start.
This meeting is being recorded.
Do you want me to load it, and I'll move the slides for you?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Just give me a moment.
Well, given that we have a number of participants, um, in addition to those that we call to the roll call vote, we are going to speak now, um, by Mr. Taylor, Miss Dammara, Miss W. O. McRae, Miss Jenna Shannery, who is our recording secretary, Mr. Ritzman, Miss Susan Hart, Miss, uh, Carol Robinson, Miss Vila, and the Dr. Charchak.
All right, thank you, Dr. Flaherty. So, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to highlight what is happening at Cove School. Um, we've had, all of us have had to think outside the box this year to adjust to a new way of doing school. You can switch it, thanks. Yeah. And it's been a great year to be principal. So this is my first year as principal, coming out of, um, a fourth grade classroom. So not only did my staff have to meet the challenges of COVID, but they also had to do so under new leadership. So that can be a source of anxiety for a staff in a normal year, never mind a year like this. So first, I want to thank them for the amazing work, um, that they've been doing all year and, um, through the summer to get ready for this year, and for their patience as I navigate my new role. And thank you to the leadership team for the constant support they have provided along the way. Um, this year has definitely provided so many opportunities to learn as a leader and for us all to learn as educators. Uh, but despite the challenges, there's so much, um, positive that's happening, and so I've tried to group, um, those things into four categories that, um, I wanted to focus on from Cove. Community, collaboration, and shared responsibility, cultural competency, and creativity. Um, so we've always had a good sense of, um, community at Cove, and, um, we have, um, a participant who always likes to dress up. This is, um, him dressed up as a Cove owl that we got, um, he's, um, owl is our mascot, and we got that outfit from, that the PTO bought this year upon his request. Um, and in the bottom left, he's dressed up as the Grinch during our, um, school-wide scavenger hunt that we had in the fall. Um, we always get excited about spirit days that provide a sense of community. So this was a, the week before, we did our three remote days and, um, our holiday break, we had five days of spirit days for that week, and one of them was a Whoville Day, so the kids are dressed up for that. We also had, um, from the PTO setting up, um, a trumpet player, Jay Daly, who came during dismissal on the last day that we were in school before vacation to play holiday music on his trumpet.
I walked around, several of the schools did this day, right? I've never seen hair so high in my life.
I know, it's amazing. And then, uh, even though we don't spend a lot of time in the hallways anymore, we still love to display the work we're doing, um, and showing that we, how we integrate literacy and content and SEL. So this is a display of bottles on trees from the novel Wind Dixie that the fourth grade, um, read, representing the importance of reflecting on our mistakes and learning from them. Here's another example that we see in our hallway of, um, a word web, vocabulary web, that the third grade students did for Charlotte's Web. And then the first grade RLA, um, classes are part of Cove School, and they have done an amazing job building community, even though they don't get to spend time together in person. Um, so this is an example of one class that does a weekly challenge, creating something individually, but then sharing with each other. They're different ways of creating and building. Um, a culture of collaboration has also been strong at Cove, but I think has grown even stronger since the spring, and, um, not only within our school, but has grown, um, outside the school and across the district. Our shared responsibility for all our students by our staff and by, um, people across the district has, has been nothing short of amazing. And we could not have tackled all the challenges this year without learning and working together. Uh, one example of the collaboration that's shown is, um, here with Stephanie Gagnon, Gagnon, our SLP, who has, um, conducted language labs in classrooms. And so, um, she is modeling, um, UDL strategies and targeting the students who need the skills as well as, um, applying them within the classroom to all the students. And we also have a remote learning guinea pig at Cove School. He's remote this year, but not always. Uh, Mrs. King comes in, and he stays remote, and they work together and collaborate to, um, have engage in lessons in OT. So, um, across the district and in Cove School, we've been building our cultural competency, learning about the things that reflect the lives of our students and help build their identity, and, and we learn each other, about each other, and the different ways that our cultures are different, or different things that we do to celebrate our cultures. Um, and so we have a multi multicultural lending library at Cove School now. Our ESL teacher, Sabrina Parisi, um, created an Amazon wishlist and got, um, built her library up to over a hundred books. So, um, any teacher can borrow these books, and there's a list, um, in the middle there, on the bottom, it shows a list that they can access to find out, um, the country or language of the book and incorporate it into their curriculum. Or Ms. Parisi can help them find one that, um, relates to what they're doing in the classroom. Students can see their languages and cultural traditions reflected on the walls of Cove School, creating a welcoming and inclusive environment. And we had, um, a couple of students who had not ever experienced snow before, so taking advantage of that new experience, and, um, they got to go outside and just take advantage of that, and, um, and we like to tweet out those events. The students in our school speak Spanish, Portuguese, Punjabi, Mandarin, Albanian, Russian Dari, or Arabic and English. Um, here you see, um, some of the students dancing to a Go Noodle video, um, with Spanish guided dances. Um, so in addition to the multicultural library we have in person, we also have, um, been making a lot of use of virtual libraries through, for every month. There's usually a different virtual library that teachers, um, create, and then they use Seesaw to reflect on those, um, books. And it is a great opportunity to have access to books that we may not have in person, or for all students to be able to access them if we didn't have multiple copies. Uh, so creativity, um, has also been a highlight of this year because we have had to be flexible, and we've all demonstrated that flexibility in adapting to the changes that we've needed to make this year. So, um, a lot of the changes have been with even how the classroom looks. So the classrooms do look different, we're sitting in rows, and we're facing front, or we're, um, sitting on buckets outside and, or doing lessons outside. Um, here we have kindergartners in the bottom right-hand corner, are, we started out with lap desks because we couldn't envision kindergartners in desks, they're usually at tables sitting together. And, um, but after using the lap desks, um, we thought that they needed more structure, and so then we did pull in the desks a- after that. So just having that flexibility, um, that the decisions we make can be changed depending on how they're working for the students. But in the end, we're, um, focused on learning and fun regardless of how the classrooms look. That was just a little dance they were doing for morning meeting. And, uh, you know, we didn't want to go, get away from using small group instruction, even though, um, we're trying to be far apart. So our, our small groups are even smaller, or we're just farther apart, so we've just, um, made a point to make that work this year, so we can continue that, um, good teaching practice. And, um, with the loss of instruction over the spring, we have a laser focus for the foundational skills in K and 1, and so we've had extensive research done by our literacy coach Heidi Moran, who's delved into the science of reading to build, make sure we're building phonemic awareness and phonics skills, especially for those who may not have gotten it in kindergarten, um, at the end of, um, kindergarten. So, um, these are some examples of those lessons. And of course, we take advantage of our outdoor space, so whether we're learning outside or playing outside in the snow, we take advantage of what the seasons have to offer, so we're hoping to continue that throughout the rest of the year and look forward to even more outdoor learning in the springtime. The other thing that looks different are field trips. So now we have field trips that come to our classrooms. So these are first grade students who are learning about, um, creatures from the sea and how they use sound. And so, um, since we're not be, able to go to, um, a museum or, and learn about these things, they came to us in buckets, and they got to learn about the creatures firsthand. Uh, we also take advantage of places that we can walk to. So these third graders are doing a survivor challenge that, uh, answering the question, what would you do if you landed on the shores of Massachusetts in the 1600s? So they were asked to partner, um, up and observe and consider solutions to various problems. And we also welcome some, um, other creatures to our Cove outdoor learning space. So this was on one, um, morning before the buses arrived, and it was awesome to see. I wish the kids had been around to see it too, but I guess they probably wouldn't have been there. This is our third graders with a different kind of mask on as they learned to take perspective, um, that see the world through the eyes of the characters and when they were learning about Charlotte, Charlotte's Web. So they have those masks on, and they also have their regular masks on underneath. Um, and we knew from the beginning of the year that social emotional learning was going to always be a focus, um, throughout the year, as it always is anyway, but especially so this year. So, um, that's a student practicing her mindfulness meditation. And we have students in first grade who have desk reminders that have a, um, social emotional learning focus of the week. So the one in the little jar says be present, and then in the box, it's, um, it is grateful, uh, like a gratefulness box, or gratitude box. So, um, just to reiterate that, we wanted to make sure that this year was going to be awesome and that they weren't, we weren't gonna judge it as being a negative year. So, um, we were hoping for a lot of surprises, and I think we got some.
Can I just end and thank Erin and her staff, as everybody has been working so hard? But, uh, it's always difficult to be a first-year principal, and it's amazing what Erin has been able to accomplish in a very short period of time. We're very grateful that we have her. Any questions for Erin while I'm setting back up for the... Okay, well now we'll move on to, um, hearing from any of our student reps if they want to comment on the presentation or, um, give us an update of, uh, what's been happening in school since we last met at the beginning of December. Um, I'll start with Ava Mack, one of our middle schoolers.
Hi, everyone, so, um, last meeting, I did bring up an idea of Sooner the Month, and it has grown a lot. Um, I've contacted with teacher, and we've gone a group of people, and it was definitely, it was optional. And we've been meeting and talking about important things like Sooner the Month, and talking about what we can do for meetings, when we meet with other students as a team, and what we can do, especially in a, um, online environment. So it's been going really well.
Great, thank you, Ava. And our newest member, Cameron Redmond.
Hi, I thought the presentation was very well. I'm so glad to see that we're able to do all of these activities while being socially distant. I thought that it was really nice.
Thank you and welcome, Cameron. And I believe we have Virginia Betts, uh, one of our 12th graders from the high school.
Hi, uh, yes, I'm here. Um, so, I guess I can talk about my high school gymnastics team. So our practices have been going really well. Um, we've been in our group cohorts and wearing masks and staying distant, but we've still found ways to make it fun to practice together. And then in school, with the, being the fully remote week, it is definitely harder to focus with longer classes and being on the screen, but some of my teachers will give us like a five-minute little break halfway through class to get up and stretch or get a drink. And I find that really helpful to then come back to continue learning. Um, yeah, so, I think that would be great to implement somehow.
Thank you, Virginia, and I'll just add, uh, cause at our last meeting, we had the high school, um, choral performance for the holidays, and I did get to watch the concert, and I was just amazed at, um, the talent and the work that went into, um, doing it. I still can't fathom, you know, Dr. Chirochik and I both participated in the Hallelujah Chorus, and it was not a pleasant song when it left our office. But to the, to the miraculous work of, uh, our high school, um, it, it was beautiful. It sounded wonderful, and, and it was quite, uh, talented. So I thank them for all their work as well. Okay, so I will move on, um, to our focus topic for this evening, which is an extension of a lot of what you saw in the presentation from Cove around social emotional learning and mental health. It is a priority for us this year as we're working on academics, but also knowing that the trauma of, um, everything that our students are seeing in the world, what they're seeing tonight on TV, um, and what we, um, know the pandemic has brought to them is really at the forefront of, um, our work along with, um, the academic work that we're doing. So I want to first address what is happening at the elementary across all elementary level, uh, schools. These will be, um, items that are present. And then I will introduce each of the principals, and they'll talk to you about what's happening individually at their schools. So in all of our five elementary schools, every school has a school adjustment counselor that can... that can work with small groups and individual, with students and families that are struggling or facing anxiety. We follow responsive classroom, and as you walk through the hallways, you'll see that, you'll hear your students using the language. And it's really in helping to our youngest students to learn how to manage their emotions and to become more aware of how they're feeling, and strategies that they can use when they're angry or sad or feeling anxious, so that they can learn to advocate for themselves and to also control their own emotions. And second step is a similar program for addressing the same types of skills, but it's for our youngest students. And so that is implemented at all of our elementary schools. And now I will introduce Mrs. Megan Hart to talk about Ayers Rileside specifically.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm very excited to be here today to talk a little bit about what we're doing at Ayers for social emotional health and wellbeing for students and staff. So some of these things are on the slide are things that we have always done in previous years, but we are putting a more priority and more focus on them. So we have a whole school meeting every Friday, and on that Friday, we join a Zoom meeting. Each classroom joins. We celebrate accomplishments for the week. We recognize students that are nominated, who have demonstrated some of the four pillars of responsive classroom that we follow, and that is I take care of myself, we take care of each other, we take care of our school, and we do our best work. So those are pillars that we continue to bring up over and over again and reinforce with kiddos. We have had, our school adjustment counselor is wonderful. She has been going into classrooms and doing whole group and small group lessons on social emotional and personal growth. And she does things that are very developmentally appropriate, like how big is the size of my problem? Is this a small problem? Is this a large problem? How could I gauge my reaction to this? And really building in some of that skills-based instruction for SEL that is really important for our youngest learners. We have, she's also given us some conversation starters for snack and recess times with kids. We know that some of the social skills are rusty in terms of interpersonal, and so these have been fun ways for kids to get to know each other a little bit better and begin conversations with kids they might not typically be drawn to. Some of the work that we had actually started this summer, we had a staff book group, and the book is called Kids These Days, and it's written by Dr. Jody Carrington. She is a child psychologist in Canada. It's a wonderful book. She is wonderful. She talks a lot about self-regulation in children. She talks a lot about how we can build positive relationships and connections with children to help teach self-regulation skills. And so that is actually something that we just revisited recently at our staff meeting today as well. We continue to be something that we talk about and build our foundational skills on. We are very fortunate that we have an Ayers parent, Sarah Frederickson, who created a grant that was approved by the Bev Ed Foundation last year that we are in the process of implementing now, which is an opportunity, a voluntary opportunity for mindfulness sessions for staff, which I think is especially important in the climate that we're in now. So she has recently come and presented, and we are working out different sessions that will be available to staff to focus on their own social emotional and wellbeing, which is very important. And last, but certainly not least, you can see this book on the screen, we were very fortunate to have a connection with a local author who published a book called When the World Closed: A Magical Adventure to Inspire Social and Emotional Growth During Isolation. And it's a really perfect story for talking about the pandemic and feelings during the pandemic with students. And it's about two kiddos who build a blanket fort in their room, and they travel the world, and they find that in all the places that they go, people are all experiencing the same thing due to the pandemic, and that everyone is working and doing their part, and that hopefully very soon, everything will slowly return back to normal. So it really kind of addresses like, what are these feelings? They're normal feelings? How do we deal with them? And we're very fortunate that the author is actually going to come read this with the kids virtually, and we're going to do some discussions around that. And we are also exploring with the help of our PE teacher, a lot of socially distanced recess games and possibly some increase in our recess times as well, so that students have more opportunity for play. I think that's at Ayers.
Thank you, Mrs. Hart. I'll also add that there was a parent at, from Ayers that heard about our topic for this evening, reached out to me. She did send an email in late this afternoon. I haven't had a chance to read through it yet, but she's a mental health professional in the community, and we're going to be getting together and meeting so that she can help to frame some parent workshops that we can run this spring for all parents. Now I'd like to introduce Mrs. Julie, Ms. Julie Smith from Centerville.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I would just like to start by congratulating Mrs. Sweeney for her excellent presentation. And while she talks about being a first-year principal, and Megan as well, we love having you two as part of our new group, and we are learning so much from you. So, you know, especially during this time. I think I want to take the opportunity around social emotional learning to not talk about any new initiatives, because a lot of things that we are doing, we've kind of done the past few years, but to comment on how there has been such a significant shift in the kinds of sort of SEL things that we're seeing in our, in our school. So the way that we're doing school right now, in the, with the removal of all of the transitions and the additional structures, we have greatly reduced the amount of stress and crisis. And so, you know, as we were reflecting on the, how the first trimester of the school year went, we're like, wow, this is feeling so different to us. We are not, you know, responding to really small problems, you know, consistently. And so, you know, we're really thinking about like, you know, what can we learn from this experience? And because we're not sort of in crisis mode much of the time, it's giving us more time to actually do those proactive lessons, because where we are seeing the real need for social emotional skills is in our younger learners, right? So in our kindergarten, first grade students who are anxious about what's happening around them and may not have the language to express those thoughts and feelings. And so I feel like we have more time to put our resources to where the real true need is. And additionally, to our students who have, you know, more intensive mental health needs, we are able to, I think, better support those students. And additionally, the, you know, I'm going to make a comment here. When I was writing about the limited social interactions, I almost felt like I was writing a textbook in 1952 to say, you know, when we limit the interactions of children, good things happen. But what we're noticing is that, you know, we have done that to some, to some regard where students really are spending the day with their, their classroom cohorts and only their classroom cohort cohorts, and those are really small groups of kids. And so they are having to develop these skills to navigate a small, you know, work through their, their problems and their conflicts, because inevitably, those things happen. And I can't think of a better day than today to feel that those, those interpersonal skills are incredibly important. And so those have been interesting ways that we have been able to support kids that maybe we didn't address because they could choose to selectively avoid some of those situations. So we're, we're really thankful for that opportunity. The shorter day, we're noticing, you know, I think we have long battled tired kids for, for a few years, you know? Kids have been really busy and very scheduled and have a lot of distractions outside of school. And so I think school, the school day was really taxing for a lot of kids. And so the shorter day is, is helping kids cope with the academic demands. And so there's something that's working for us, you know, in limiting some of those kind of smaller, lower level stress things that we would see. And then I would just like to say, over the last few days, since we've, we've had our remote learning days, that we did host 30 to 40 students that, who did, who did show us that, you know, remote learning was a challenge for them. So when we were having these most recent remote learning days, we invited them to come to school. We had some staff who volunteered to be there to support kids to access their remote learning. And I'll say that that has made a huge difference in the amount of engagement with our kids during the, the remote learning case that we have. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to, to kind of say that things are really different from a social emotional standpoint for us right now. And I hope that we can take some time later on in the spring when we think about shifting, you know, back to normal, because there are some, some real lessons to be learned here.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Now we'll return to Ms. Sweeney to hear about Cove.
All right, so we, at Cove, we're doing a lot of the same things that we normally do, just maybe having more of a focus on them, making sure they're getting in to the day. We have a fidelity to responsive classroom practices for both in-person and the RLA model. So the RLA classes are following what responsive classroom teaches. We have an implementation of a second steps SEL passport challenge that's going to happen in grade two, where they focus on specific areas each month and do activities around them, so that it's not happening kind of randomly, but very purposefully. We, the kids have regularly scheduled meetings with our school adjustment counselor, and counseling is available on an as-needed basis as well. The students practice social thinking language and behaviors in the classroom, and learning, mindfulness and yoga have been incorporated into the classrooms more and more this year as well. We do Go Noodle activities that help increase movement, you know, add some fun, give them short spurts of breaks that put in some movement and get some laughs. There's our outdoor learning, of course, and we use the zones of regulation, which identify feelings by colors and different strategies to move to like the green color, so that you're feeling good about yourself and what's happening. And that's about it.
Thank you again, Mrs. Sweeney. And Ms. Motivecki is going to share what's happening at Hannah.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Great to be with you here this evening. I'll echo again Julie's sentiments for our new principals on the team. We, as an elementary team, always worked very closely together, and Megan and Erin have brought some awesome fresh ideas to the team. So I'm, I'm very grateful to be working with them this year. We are excited this year to be back together live. And, you know, I have to report back, as everybody in this room will echo who's been working in schools this year, there are just no shortage of smiles underneath those masks. It's fun to have had this remote learning opportunity to see those smiles live and direct. It's always a pleasure to see the child's whole face. But that's something that I will say again and again and again, there is just no shortage of joy, even in a very different gear. At Hannah, we go back to our anchor, and those are the words of our school motto, be kind, be responsible, be the best you can be, the choice is yours. And we work very hard as a faculty and as a whole school community to emulate those words. We continue to use responsive classroom across all grades. And as you've heard from all the schools, that's a strong and deep investment across all the elementary schools. It really focuses on building cohesive classroom culture and helping students develop responsible decisions as human beings and as invested learners. We continue to have a weekly virtual whole school morning meeting. Again, that's one of those pieces of the year that's been so exciting. I know I had tears in my eyes, the first whole school morning meeting back this year, because as different as it is, it just feels like our regular fantastic whole school morning meeting when we're all together. And our children, our classrooms take turns leading the morning meetings. We also do the weekly character nominations, and we have character nominations that are given to students, but quite often, we have students who are giving shout-outs to their classroom teachers or to each other. And for those of you who have ever been part of our morning meetings, it's just an awesome thing to see when the kids are giving shout-outs to one another. We have a very cohesive implementation of zones of regulation. Our students also have their own personal toolboxes, which they may have on their desk or in a notebook when they need a visual reminder of what works well for them to get them back to the just right learning zone in the green. We participate in a whole school mindful moment, which was something that was implemented last year by our team who participated in the SEL certification course. And at the close of our day, we always end with a mindful moment together whole school. Some of the grade three and four students are doing a reflective journal along with our mindful moment, and in some classroom, it's, it's just a very, a brief pause. The trickiest thing about that is not to get the children invested in the mindful moment, it's getting the adults to take their own pause, take a deep breath to stop working for a moment. So very often, if you're in the office and we're doing our mindful moment, either myself or Mrs. Howell are reminding all the grown-ups, it's time for them to take their time out and do a mindful moment too. Exploring outdoor learning in our outdoor classrooms has been fantastically beneficial to social emotional growth for our students. It is amazing what extra fresh air and sunshine can do for everyone's mood. And as you saw on the slide, from the student who had never experienced snow before over at Cove, the joy of being outside in the elements is an awesome thing too. So we've got our students going out in the snow, in the drizzling rain. They are just happy to be out there. And that's been an amazing takeaway for, for all of us at the elementary level, making the most of our outdoor space and fortunately, our beautiful campuses that support that. And exploring new physically distanced recess games. I've never seen kids be more delighted than this year at just chasing fall leaves. That's a perfect socially distanced activity. And then the takeaway, when they bring those leaves back to the classroom and do a little further science and exploration just from interacting with nature. So all of those things have supported our social emotional development at Hannah this year. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Motivecki. My screen has frozen. Hold on. And Mrs. Brown is here to talk about North Beverly.
Hi, thank you, everyone, for having me this evening and all the principals. I think you certainly, we can echo at North Beverly, a lot of things that are going on across the district. Strong implementation of first six weeks of school. We have a mantra at North Beverly for our staff and our students. We want students and staff running into school, not wanting to run out and get out in the afternoons and be free. We want them to enjoy school and have that learning be fun and exciting and a place where they feel comfortable. And so we spent a lot of time during those first six weeks of school, really just working with kids, establishing relationships with students, and teachers spending, you know, that quality time, just helping them reintegrate back into a more structured setting that they weren't used to. With that, I'd like to echo a bit of what Ms. Julie Smith said earlier, you know, really finding that students across the building, because of the way we came back to school across the district in a reduced day setting, where they're not navigating quite as many social interactions as they normally would in a full-day school day during the regular typical year, has certainly helped them, because that's, it's overwhelming coming back after a pandemic, but it's even more overwhelming coming back and then having to navigate the social situations of lunch and recess and different times of the day that can be really stressful for students. So I think it has been just amazing to be able to have them back in this environment five days a week. That certainly has been, that consistency has been really important in helping build those relationships and making school a fun and exciting and warm and comfortable place. So I think, you know, I noted on here, the fewer transitions, the limited unstructured time, and as, as Julie had said, those increased times, especially K1 and 2, to have pro-social learning going on for students has been very, very beneficial. We also have strong implementation of responsive classroom, which is first six weeks, as well as throughout the year, the zones of regulations, regulation. And then second step, certainly looking at that time in the morning, we have that time during arrival that's a little longer than it used to be in dismissal, and it allows and it allows for some of that learning to occur in an even smaller setting for students. And that's been just amazing. And as everyone has said, the outdoor learning has strongly impacted, I think, social-emotional and mental health for our students, being outside, the fresh air. You know, certainly, we're looking at this winter, if we get snow, if we get any more snow, being out in the snow and getting those snow pants back on that we used to do years and years and years ago and kind of exploring being outside and kind of thinking about the importance of those aspects of mental health for students. So, those are some of the things that have been going on at North Beverly.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. And I cannot see everybody that's in, so I did not see Ms. Oliver. I'm assuming Mr. Trombley, you're going to be handling the middle school tonight?
Yes, I am. Yeah, so at Beverly Middle School, and I would echo what my colleagues have said as well, I think with the new structures in place and an emphasis on supporting students and embracing them and having them come back, I think we've seen much less discipline issues and students are just happy to be there, you know, after a long summer. So, I think the structure and support is really key. First off, I think as a staff, recognizing and embracing our own vulnerabilities that, you know, we are anxious, we are, this is new to us, too. And then, be willing to share that with our kiddos, I think, is inspiring to many of our kids to see that, that we as adults are going through it as well and we're persevering. So, and practicing self-care goes along with that. So, I think before we can really meet our kiddos where they're at, we have to be kind of centered in ourselves. And with that, I think the teachers have been focusing on lesson planning with an SEL lens in mind, taking the time in the beginning of the year to really develop those relationships, especially when we are in a remote setting. We've had some discussions and book clubs about equitable grading and discipline. And I think that our kids are coming from all different backgrounds and some of those discipline issues that were in the past are not there. And so, I think there's ways to treat that and approach those differently. So, we have a book club about equitable grading and we've kind of started to have that conversation of, you know, you know, what is engagement for these kids? We've had a continued counseling presence throughout the hallways and open door policy, especially with all the principals and the guidance. Any kid can come in and the guidance counselors have been in the hallways and then helping with students in the moment, you know, when they're feeling stuck or when they're feeling anxious. We've established engagement trackers where teachers have put in students who have not been engaging. And then, on a weekly basis, we've had outreach from teachers, guidance, and then principals to reaching out to those families and reaching out to those kiddos. So, we're keeping tabs on all of our kids on a weekly basis, seeing where they're at and where they're having troubles. We've instituted in the seventh and eighth grade, a homework club. So, students who come to school, after school, they can stay with us and we go into a maker's space, socially-distanced, and we work on getting some of their homework done and some of their remote classes that are in the afternoons. A lot of the kids, when they get home, they don't have the same structure and the same access that they do in school. So, we keep them there longer and they get some of their work done. We're also starting to formalize a learning lab. So, it's been really helpful and I think some of other principals have mentioned it. Students on their off days, instead of being at home in an environment that may not be suitable for learning, especially remote learning, we've invited them in on their off days and that has been largely successful and students have been really feeling good about that. And I've even had students emailing me saying, hey, can I come in on my off day? And just to make that connection. We can go to the next slide. Some of our team meetings have been fantastic, too, in really showcasing students' talents. So, we've had some student showcases in our Wednesday team meetings and it's been fantastic. And I invite Dot and Sue and whoever wants to see. Kids are taking their talent and it's kind of a, America's Got Talent. And whatever talent they have, they've been sharing it. And it's been fantastic. So, you know, we've had piano players, we've had students talking about their disabilities and really open and honest conversations and their peers have been very empathetic. It's been fantastic. So, we've really tried to make their teams be kind of this community and it's been really, really working. We've done a ton of home visits this year, communicating with parents, frequently, daily calling. We've had some scheduling issues where parents couldn't drive their students to school on the off days. So, we've worked with transportation and we've gotten them rides to school. So, we've been very flexible with accommodating with families, getting them, you know, the resources that they need and the kids' access to school. There's been a lot of communicating and coordinating with our mental health providers. We've had more students, I think, hospitalized this year than any other year. So, with those outside supports, we've been really coordinating. I think it's been helpful to get a whole picture of the students. Our guidance department created a holiday giving tree, which was fantastic for the kiddos. We have a lot of kids that have some economic disadvantages and so, we had a holiday giving tree and that was fantastic. Our Friday and Monday memos to staff were constantly talking about social and emotional learning, mental health, taking time for self-care, linking articles, discussing them at our team meetings. And so, that's kind of been a constant stream of communication from the administration. And then, we've had student presentations. We have the NAN project, which talks about mental illness and it's, that was fantastic. That was to our seventh grade. We had a digital citizenship to the whole school and that was how to be a good, how to be a good digital citizen in regards to social media and some of the pitfalls that our young kids fall into. And then, we have, in a couple of weeks, we have an equity presentation with Dr. Morgan. So, we're looking forward to that. He's agreed to come and do a kid-friendly version of his PD and that should be fantastic for our kids as well.
Thank you, Mr. Trombley. And I also thank you for joining our team because you've brought a very strong SEL lens and you've been a great addition to the middle school. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, I'd like to introduce Ms. Taylor to talk about the high school.
Thank you, everyone, for having me here tonight. I think in my presentation, I wanted to make sure you're clear on the social-emotional services that we offer, but I can speak to some of the things that our other principals talked about. One of the things we've been trying to do at the high school is, whenever possible, to offer a lot of our regular-year opportunities. And so, we have almost all our clubs up and running. Some of the meetings are virtual, but our yearbook, our key club, our ROTC, our Model UN, the National Honor Society, all are doing projects and having meetings with students. We've been fortunate to be able to offer some of our traditional events. We had the girls' powder puff football game and the boys', senior boys' Thanksgiving game. It was seniors versus seniors, but it was a nice day and a nice opportunity. We were able to do a fall play with Alice in Wonderland, physically-distanced and masked. And we are making plans to do a musical as well. Ms. Plannan is starting to get the word out about auditions for that shortly. Our climate committee, which is composed of teachers and students, have been, did the letters of gratitude right before we broke for the winter where we ask members of the community to write letters to each other about what they're grateful for. Both students and teachers both receive and get those and that's always nice. And we also have the Panther Student of the Month that we have been doing, which is a student nominated by a teacher and then selected. All the nominees are looked at by a student-teacher panel and the students are recognized for Panther of the Month and that is the contributions that they've made to the school as a role model in one way or another. So, we've been able to do some of those things as well and that's been very helpful. But I wanted to give you an overview of our actual counseling supports that we have here at the high school. Beverly High School has 4.5 adjustment counselors. Now, school adjustment counselors are different from guidance counselors. They do have a special education caseload. If a student has support from a school adjustment counselor on their education plan, a school adjustment counselor is assigned to that student. We have programs that have school adjustments counselors assigned to them, but specifically, our ladders are accomplished in our Beacon program. And part of the job of the school adjustment counselors is to do a lot of coordination with community agencies such as Salem Hospital or the Department of Children and Families and certainly lots of private counselors as well because even though we have counselors available to provide support for our students, sometimes the student actually needs to see a counselor more often, but we do work and coordinate with their student counselors. Counseling is available to all students. If a student during the course of the day wants to see a counselor, we make sure that they're available and when, sometimes we make recommendations to students and parents that the student might want to regularly see one of our counselors. We also have five guidance counselors. Guidance counselors also trained in personal counseling and obviously, too, they're probably better well-known for college and career planning. We are also fortunate to have one part-time counselor through a LAHE grant. That person's specialty is in substance use, but also does some other counseling as well. The LAHE grant has helped us with a little bit more supplement with further counseling. Now, as far as making sure that we're providing students with supports, the student support team meets weekly with the counselors, the nurses, as our school resource officer and our assistant principals to review students who need support or students who are in jeopardy. And we look at that and we look for what kind of interventions we need to do. We also are part of the Community Collaborative Initiative. Those are monthly meetings with the Salem Juvenile Court and the Department of Children and Families. We have our advisory program and at last year, we designed it to be built around the SEL competencies. So, each grade has a different competency that they're doing activities and skill-building to work in. The freshman academy team is still meeting and they're doing interventions with students as well. And we have, like many of the schools, been able to create some systems of support, having students come in the afternoon for support during the remote classes, having some students come in on a non-assigned date so that they can have further support, both as far as counseling and academic as well. I think I have one more slide. Here are some of the, some information if people want to learn more about what our counseling program is and some resources. On our school website, we have a little info slide about the school adjustment counselors, some background and the resources that they have available. We have the same thing for our school adjustment counselors. The, excuse me, our guidance counselors. And our school adjustment counselors created a page that Panther cares self-care and first aid for our students and families. That's on our Beverly Keeps Learning website and they update that with information and ideas and suggestions for families of students if they're coping with stress and anxiety or need, you know, more services. And we just began a new program, we're calling the RLA Hangout. That's for our Remote Learning Academy students where they can, during the course of the day, check in with one of our school adjustment counselors and to check in with each other. It's meant more as a social opportunity to assess where they are, to get some feedback. Some of our Remote Learning Academy students are doing self-directed electives. So, the paces are, they can choose the time and the pace and so, we're taking advantage of that so that they have a person they can turn to and have a chance to socialize with one another. So, those are some of the resources that the high school is offering for our social-emotional learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. And then, just quickly, on the district level, we're going to be, as all of our PD that we've had this year has had, some opportunities for professional development in social-emotional learning. And we're very excited about our day in March where we're going to have a national keynote speaker, Dr. Adolf Brown, right now is scheduled to come to the district. We'll see where we're at as far as being able to meet in crowds, but if not, he will be presenting virtually. And he'll be doing a presentation on his book called Two Backpacks. And it talks about how all individuals walk around with two backpacks. One is the one that holds the emotions and the stories and the pieces of themselves that they want to share with the world. And then, the second backpack is where they keep all of the things that may have been happening in their life or emotions that they don't want to share and they keep that hidden. And he'll give us some strategies for working with that as well. And then, we'll be, hopefully, we're picking a book that we'll be using as a district read that will be helping to provide some hands-on strategies and tools that our teachers will be able to use and implement. And the strategies are built on the Castle Framework, which is one of our district goals. And that's around relationship framework, responsible decision-making, social awareness, self-management, and self-awareness. And I think we ran two minutes over.
Want to close this out, class?
Just to give you a chance, if anybody has any specific questions, I know we have another school committee meeting this evening. So, if you don't have a chance to get all of your questions answered, if you email me, we will make sure that we get answers for you. But I just thank all of our principals for their presentations this evening.
Thank you all very much. And that concludes our meeting. Our next meeting is February 3rd. And may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Great. First and a second. All those in favor, Ms. Ebel, would you mind doing the roll again, please? Thank you.
Sure, John Lady.
Yes.
Rachel Abel. Yes. Sorry. Waiting for someone to respond. Dr. McKenzie.
Yeah.
Okay. Lorg and Sudak?
Yes.
Ed, Joanne Hildreth?
Yes.
Dr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Trombley?
Yes.
Virginia Betts?
Yes.
Ava Mack?
Yes.
And Cameron Redman?
Yes.
I think that covers the official members. So, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. And school committee members, we will call to order in just a moment. We'll let some people file out. Thank you, Bev Cam.